Next on our agenda is approval of the regular county council meeting that is scheduled January 15th, 2019. It has been moved in second. All those in favor of approval of the regular county council meeting, January 15th, 2019, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, it is so ordered. The next on our agenda is, we don't have anything for third reading, but for the second reading, we have ordinance 2019-01 and ordinance transferring authority and control of the E91 operations center and emergency preparedness department of Williamsburg County government to the sheriff of Williamsburg County to further provide for transfer of personnel, equipment, and budget authority with respect to those two departments, which shall hereafter be under the direction and control of the sheriff of Williamsburg County.
Make a motion. We have second read.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of approving this for second reading, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it. Moving on to the second reading for ordinance 2019-02 and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a good of a good and sufficient deed conveying interest in a portion of tax act number 45-453-003 containing 1.75 acres on Cowhead, Hemingway, South Carolina to the town of Hemingway pursuant to a new property tax agreement between Williamsburg County and Dart Industries, AKA Tupperware USA and Company or Incorporated, execution of a partial release of lien of the property. Do you have anything to add?
Any questions? Probably Councilman Lee would be in a better position to address this, but the town of Hemingway wants this parcel for the water, for their water system and Dart Industries, which is Tupperware, who we have an agreement with them, which encumbered this piece. We all come, it really isn't a lien, but it's so complicated, simple thing to do is just do what we call quickly, be and say, if we own something, you can have it. If we, and if there's any lien on it, we don't claim it. Otherwise, the lien effect of what in the agreement we have with Tupperware remains in full force in effect. We just want the town of Hemingway to have this for their approval.
Any other questions?
Make a motion. We have first reading. Second, we have second reading. Make a motion. We have second reading on ordinance 2019-02. Second.
Alright, it has been motioned and seconded. All those in favor of second reading signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, it is so ordered. The next order of business is our first reading for ordinance 2019-003 and ordinance to amend the agreement for development of a joint county industrial park executed on April 24th, 1995 by and between Berkeley County, South Carolina and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial/business park so as to include additional property in Berkeley County as part of the joint county industrial park and other matters related thereto. Have you been with that?
This is, we do this annually. We members of council particularly, in 1995, we entered into this joint development agreement. This is not a park that we own together. Under a special legislation where you can have these type of agreements, adjoining counties, which are like Williamsburg County, which is a county that has more, they allow to have a joint park agreement to give incentives to Berkeley County parks, for example, Bolling. And as a result, we get 1% of the tax revenue annually paid by those industries. What we're doing now is just updating the industries that were added in Berkeley County to our ordinance for last year. And we do this every year, put them in the basket, so to speak. And if we have any, we share them and we turn around and do the same with Berkeley County. And we, they'll read the hours when we read theirs. It's just something we do every year.
Make a motion. We have first reading.
It has been motioned and seconded. All those in favor of, and first reading for the ord, oh wait a minute, yeah, first reading for the ordinance 2019-003, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. He said I don't have to do it for first reading. I shouldn't have learned that. Alright, so the next on our list is a resolution. Resolution 2019-001, proposed water use agreement, whoops, I'm sorry, whoops, I'm getting ahead of myself. This is just titled on the first reading and ordinance to provide for a moratorium on certain structures as part of the mining operation. So it's first reading.
Make a motion. We have first reading.
Alright, now we're down for the resolution. 2019-001, proposed water use agreement with Uffluas Adult Health Daycare. You guys have enough information on that? Basically what's happening with this is that she lives, she has a daycare that is adjacent to a county-owned facility, particularly Williamsburg County Fire Station Number 15 on Seaboard Road. And she desires to use the water from the county well located at the fire station until such time as the water, as the county water is available for purchase when the system is extended to the Seaboard Road area. Is where the party is here to have their location and where the daycare will provide all of the expenses associated with tapping into this water source at the fire station. And it's only going to be for a brief time.
Yes, I am, and I'm, if I'm there, she called and signed up for the water anyway, so.
I'll make a motion. I believe, for evidence of this proposal. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and it has been. Does no one else have any questions, right? All those in favor of the resolution 2019-001, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, it is so ordered. Our next area up is the committee report. And we have, one of the things on it, on it is the big committee report. The big committee met January 16th, 2018 to discuss the builders or contractors that will be used for the capital project sales tax in reference to the new fire station. And members that were present were wanting to Brad, Renee Swinton, Renee Bryant, Andre Dorsey, and William Horton were to attend at this meeting. They have, so have, will be, have submitted a list of contractors who submitted the RFPs, and of those were Gilbert and Fields Construction. They were going to, they submitted a bid for $4,63,700. Coastal Structures Corporation, 4.5, $4,515. $4,515, 290, I think I said that right, thousand dollars. Bobbit Design Bill, 4.462, $221. Harrington Construction, also $4,234,934. And Southside Constructors at $4,337,762. The committee met on Friday, December 21st, 2018, at 9:00 AM at the time of the committee rank criteria from A to D, from the proposal, evaluation, the committee selected the top three RFPs that was submitted. The committee met on January 16th with the top three contractors, Bobbit, Bobbit, and Bobbit, Gilbert and Fields, and Harrington Construction for the presentation. And after the presentation, the committee met and voted to recommend Harrington Construction as the contractors for the EMS and fire headquarters station.
What did the big committee have?
Yes.
Senator, you know the big committee, who's probably?
Um, yes, but he's not here.
Who's he, who's he?
Mr. Wilson.
That was the recommendation?
Yes, sir.
That's why I make sure we had someone from the big committee.
Yes.
Present at that time. Those, who did recommend it go with?
They recommended Harrington Construction. And they came in at $4,234,933.
I can go to the review, prove it, then put it in the recommendation.
Alright, it's been moved in second. All those in favor of selecting Harrington, Harrington Construction as the contractor for the EMS and fire station, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it. The finance committee, January 17th, with our building and grounds and along with our EMS, EMS director. After hearing the request, the committee recommended for approval the purchase of a new HVA system for the Department of Probation and Parole in the amount of $13,235. And the approval of two new franchise renewal agreements with Adam Life Link Ambulance LLC and First Choice Ambulance, Inc. As you all know, that the AC over at the Alice Chapman Building had went out and pretty much left them in a bad position. So they came to form finance to get it. I knew what installed, it cost more for them to fix it than it would be to replace it. And because the unit is so old, they decided that it would be best to go ahead and replace it. $13,235.
Make a motion. I believe approved at $13,235.
It has been moved in second. All those in favor of approving the recommendation of fire committee for $13,235 for a new HVA system, signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, it is so ordered. The other part is the two new franchise renewal agreements with Adam Life Link Ambulance LLC and First Choice Ambulance. Now, this is something that's done every year, a renewal agreement to, for them to provide assistance with getting people back and forth. Then in case, in case if something happens, we utilize these exterior services to help us with that.
He just said.
And it's done every year. They're just like a backup for EMS. Is anyone from EMS here? Oh, please come and have it explained.
Good evening. Yep, we have a question. That Adam Life Link, annually, these private services back up EMS for mutual aid. And under the franchise agreement, they're renewed annually. Adam's Life Link and First Choice has been very instrumental in mutual aid resources. They come in to assist us when we're deployed with catastrophic events, and they are very necessary to assist us with our operations. They have been with us since the very beginning of this franchise agreement, and it was my request for council to please approve their recommendation for renewal.
That's where we use the free, right?
Sir.
We use them.
Yes, sir. They, they have been with us for many years.
Make a motion. We approve. Second.
It's properly moved in second that we continue our renewal agreement with Adam's Life Link Ambulance LLC and First Choice Ambulance. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, it is so ordered. Thank you. And next on our agenda is Employee of the Month. Do we have someone represented from Madam Treasurer?
Can you all hear me on?
Yeah.
Very good.
Good evening. This afternoon, it gives me great pleasure to present to you the employee of the month for the month of February. One of the qualifications for becoming a member of the Williamsburg County Treasurer's team is that you have to provide or exude high standard service and respect for our citizens. Once again, I'm honored this evening to present to all of you Ms. Chavay Shontae Williams. She'll stand at this time. We also have my deputy with me this afternoon and our treasurer, baby, Mrs. Anaya. Recently, Chavay joined our office in September of 2016. She's been with Williamsburg County for almost 11 years, this coming June. And with Chavay, when she came, she brought with her this calming presence, an excellent customer service, and ready to learn the function of the treasurer's office. Her kind spirit, no one wants to pay taxes, we all know that. But Chavay's kind spirit makes the transaction just a little bit pleasant for the taxpayer. The treasurer's office recently joined the Solicitor's Office worthless check program to help us take care of some return checks that we had in our office. And Chavay, in collaboration with the rest of the staff, reluctantly at first, but she took on the project, and what an outstanding job they did with that. Over the last month, since the inception of the program back in November, we've collected more than $5,000 in return checks. If you'd like to know more information about that program, feel free to see us afterwards. We do have brochures in the office. So this afternoon, Chavay, we congratulate you. Thank you for being a part of our team. Continue to keep up the good work. She tends to be a little shy, y'all, but she's really not. So thank you Supervisor Dr. Wright, members of council, and the nominating committee team for allowing us to bestow this honor upon Ms. Chavay Shontae Williams.
Alright, we're gonna come back to the unfinished business of the capital project sales tax. We will go ahead and move down to appearances. Is Mr. Anthony Nettles from Hemingway High School here?
Good evening. My name's Anthony Nettles. I teach engineering at Hemingway High School. These are, these are some of my students. And more importantly, what I'm here for tonight, these are some of my team members. Hemingway High School fields a robotics team with the first robotics competition. And it's a pretty big deal, even though you may have never heard of it. We, we compete against teams from all over the world. And we're doing so at the end of this month, as a matter of fact, our yearly competition. Two years ago, three years ago, we started, actually. This is our fourth year. Two years ago, we finished as the number one team in South Carolina. We beat teams from all over country and from all over the world. We beat a team from West Virginia that's sponsored by West Virginia University and NASA that has a $6 million a year budget for their program. And yet luckily, we beat them. But what I'm here for tonight is to talk to you about the potential this has for Williamsburg County. Williamsburg County has many resources, many wonderful things. But I think we can all agree that one thing that we do lack on a large scale, not on any scale, but on a large scale, to attract business, is highly trained employees or employees who are easily trained for technology, mechanical skills, design skills, troubleshooting, and many other things. That's what this program provides. We have kids on our team who do logistics. We have kids on our team who design. I have ninth graders that can run autacad. I know 50-year-old engineers that can't do that. But our kids can. We have kids who can weld, who can build things, mechanics, we have. Basically, it runs the full spectrum. Kids learn how to interview people before the competition because they have to see who we may choose to take to the finals with us and evaluate. They find, they assess strengths, their strengths, their weaknesses. Now, what we're here for tonight is to ask Williamsburg County to partner with us with support and funding to spread this program to as many kids as we can. We have very, very limited resources. This, this isn't something that makes money. We don't sell tickets to ballgames or anything like that. But what we do provide is experience to the kids of Williamsburg County. Things they might otherwise not experience until they get to college. It even inspires some kids to go to college and do certain things. We have kids who are in engineering school now that finished this program. We have kids who are, one in particular, who's training to be an airplane mechanic now because he just liked that stuff. But we can only touch a few kids with this because of our limited resources. And this would be incredible. This could change everything for Williamsburg County as far as attracting business and industry on a large scale, if we could expand this. And it's not gonna be an overnight difference, you'd see. Five, six years down the road, it can make all the difference in the world. So we've all seen it talk about in the paper. Council talks about it, everybody talks about it. We need more employees for the jobs tomorrow to bring industry here. Well, right here is your answer. These kids, but we need more. And to do that, we need Williamsburg County to partner with us and give us support financially and any other way you can. So if you guys would consider that, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? What's your amount?
As bad as it sounds. The budget, that's, that's something, Mr. Wilson, actually, Mr. Wilson's the one who brought this program to Williamsburg County three years ago. He was the first person to approach me about it. And he would definitely be the one to talk to. Tell you, I really think, I know it would benefit us, and I really think it would benefit the county also. So any help would be greatly appreciated.
And?
Can you explain some of the mostly type of funding that you would need?
Um, basically, yes, sir. Basically, what we do with these students, we allow them to compete against other, as he said, other teams from around the world. And this costs money. Funds go towards hotel stay, transportation. We have to feed these kids. And we most definitely have to field the robot. And so, you know, we take care of the robot, but, you know, sometimes we need extra parts or other assemblies to help put us in the game, basically. And so, I am, or he is asking again for if we could get $100 from everyone. That was six dollars, as at a minimum.
That's what I'm beginning to, what type of budget you, looking at the funding from this program, because we have so much else to do, and we definitely must do what we can to help our students and stuff out of that. I got a little bit of clarity on it now, I thought you were talking big voice about.
We'd appreciate that also. We would appreciate that also.
I'll make a motion that $200 come from District 5. Oh, 200, District 5.
Thank you so much.
100 from District 3.
200 from the supervisors' office.
200 from District 7.
300 from District 2.
Mr. Perry told me, told me I had to give a thousand dollars.
It's a good time to say thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
But this is not, you had, you had that much?
How much? Did they leave it all?
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
That's my motion, Dr. White.
Is that it?
All those in favor for the donation for the Hemingway group, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, the same. The ayes have it, it is so ordered. So y'all got $2,000 coming to y'all.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next up for appearance is Ms. Mary Lewis, Lewis Outreach Center, the school is the Indian.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. What I'm bringing tonight is a problem that we have in our community, in our county, not community. Trash. Trash. I got a perfectly typed out thing already ready to read, but I'll just address. If you go to the Lewis Outreach Peds, you'll see where we go and pick up trash whenever we can and whatever the weather permits. But the problem in our, in our county is getting worse and worse. And I think we need to start right here with county council. Now, at one time, there used to be litter signs out saying that you can be fined up to $1,000 for littering. But I don't see much of those signs anymore. And there are some areas in our county that is so bad. We do what we can, but we can't get to so far. Now, what I wanna do is what can county council do, and what can we do? Even when the tractors come along and cut the, more the side of the roads, they cut up the papers and everything, leave them on the side of the road. We, everything else, man can make everything. Man can't make a vacuum to go on tractors. Man makes everything, but man can't make a vacuum to put. Man makes everything, but man can't make a vacuum to put on the tractors, to pick up the papers, the trash whenever they cut the side of the road. Now, I don't know if anybody else in here see what I see, but we got a terrible problem. And that's only getting worse, that nobody wants to pick up trash. I get the young people out, and we go and we try to keep our community and our areas close by, which we plan to do Saturday, try to keep it clean. But it gotta be something, something we can do to try to get some of the trash off the road in our county. We don't want people to come into Williamsburg County and call us the slacker's county in the state, but that's what it's looking like. It's terrible. If you don't believe it, get out, get out of King Street and ride around on these roads, five twenty-seven, all these roads leading into King Street, leading up to Hemingway, wherever you go in Williamsburg County, just go out and ride around those roads and look at the trash and see if it doesn't make you disgusted. I don't know what could be done or what we can do, but I think each county council needs to try to get together and see what we can do to make our community, our county, look a little bit better and a little more decent. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Can I say something? I, I would just like to commend Ms. Lewis and Outreach Center for the work that they have done and are continuing to do. We all know we have a problem, but it's a problem that can't be, that, that we can't solve. And if we decide and make up our mind to do some of the actions like she and her group are doing, which is taking some initiative and just picking up the trash in front of our front doors, it'll look a whole lot better. But I do commend you, and I hope that this body will take what you said to heart and try to find some plan that we can help and direct with our community to help get some of this trash up.
And I, like you said, I do announce in my church for, to help also everybody clean around their own door and in front of their house and the road. If you go down in Morrisville, the only place you see paper is where there's no houses. But where the houses are, people clean in front of their houses, because I keep announcing it. So we gotta all work together to try to keep those county clean, and it looks ridiculous.
Supervisor, I'd like to take this opportunity to say that in District Three, we do have trash pickup and, and things, and some of the young ladies here tonight from District Three have always participated with that. We've tried to work with Senator Sav with his timing, but however, Senator Sav's timing is like around May, and we tried to do it around February because, see, we have snakes in our area. Senator Sav, up there in Columbia, there ain't no snake walking this road up. But in our community, we did do it in February, early March, because any, anytime after that, I wouldn't even ask any of my citizens to go out there because we do have some dangerous snakes in the community. So we have been doing it now for the last, ever since I've been county council, and we will continue to do it. But I do agree with you that those are some of the things that we certainly need to put our attention to, is our community, our local community. And I applaud you for the job that you're doing.
Any other comments?
I have to deal with what Ms. Miller said on last month on the red road out there. The citizens out there pick up along the red road, I pronounce them the trash bags. Matter of fact, like I say, when Sav goes put it on, that gets out there and helping. But it, it do discourage you when you ride up and down the road and see all the garbage that's on the side of the road, and people just throw it out of their windows. We have a litter officer, and I think what is happening, we got to put him back on the tires. So when you catch someone throwing something at the windows, you got to enforce the penalty. And that's gonna be the only thing to help stop some of this. I mean, you just can't, power first on the hand, I mean, in certain community, in the community that I live, in the edge of the woods, someone went out there a few weeks ago, had their roof taken off and knocked it right on the side of the road. We look through it, see if we can find a name or something, couldn't find no name, and people out there get smart for that. But it just, it, it really, it really hurts you to see people do that. And we just, it's something that county can't get, other councils can't do on their own. It takes all the citizens of Williamsburg County to step up to the plate to have to see that this is done. And when we see someone doing it, we just have to report them, and once a few of them get a good penalty on, you see slower. That's all I can say. Thank you very much again.
Also, there's gonna be some stuff that's gonna be passed out in the next month or two, and led us to a probable solution, especially with the tires. We usually see a lot of them just thrown and abandoned, but there may be some solutions to help with that, that we're going to propose, once I meet with council and put the whole plan together. All right. There has also been citizens who've been visiting and giving their ideas as to how we can fix this problem, or I should say, at least lessen the impact of the problem, and those things have been taken into consideration, but I know we wanted to hear from you. Just give us a little time. Any other comment? All right, we're gonna move back up to the unfinished business, which is the Capital Project Sales Tax. We met in a work session that was held Friday, February first, to discuss the resolution, a solution to our problem. As you all know, if you sat in previous meetings, we had an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit with our projects. So some projects had to either be shifted around in order to meet that eight hundred thousand dollar deficit, or something would have to give. So council and I met, and we came up with a solution. We have selected four projects to continue to move forward with, and then the other projects, as we get our funding sources in order and we begin to collect more revenue sources, then we can carry on with the project order from that point. The problem is, is that we don't want to get too ahead of ourselves and not be able to finish projects because we started a bunch of them, so we've decided to put them in some form of a, a degree of urgency orders, as it applies to staying in line with what the Capital Project and what the citizens voted on. So those projects are as follows. County Fire and EMS and fire equipment, the Town of King Street's police headquarters, the Town of Hemingway Police Addition and Town Hall, and the multi-agency training facility with equipment, phase one. Now, what this means is, what this does not mean is that we will not get any of the projects, the rest of the projects finished. It just means that we're just gonna make sure that we have our revenues in order to move from these projects and then get into the other ones. So, does any council member have any comments related to this?
No, I think you all, on point, whip it, it's just prioritize the, what's called?
Prioritize.
Prioritize the, the main project that we would do first, so that we make sure we have the money to do it. And all the money that is probably scheduled to do some of these projects, it probably won't cost as much, but we won't know until we get it completed and load another project forward under, we go back and re-prioritize those. And that way, we can stay in budget, no overspending, because still, we, we have not come up to the type of money that the Capital Project, one percent sales tax, we anticipate taking in, so we don't, we don't overspend. That's probably the reason why we doing this.
And also, I'd just like to say to those citizens of District Three with the EMS coming back to, to Cent Lawn's area, that project, there's some wording that Supervisor says she needs to look into, but in no way are you being pushed to the bottom or you being ignored. There's some things that she's saying that she's gonna look into, and I think, and I believe her, so at this point, you may not see where it's a startup now, but that does not necessarily mean that you won't get the service that you need from that facility. For those of you who are here tonight, and I thank you for showing up tonight, and that may be your concern, but I think that we in good shape, and I think Supervisor gonna follow through on what she said, and there's just some technicalities we need to look into to make sure that we're compliant with state law.
Okay, we need a motion for the Capital Project Sales Tax.
Now, the chair, we make a motion that we go with the Capital Project Sales Tax as we have enlisted in order.
Right, it has been motioned in second. All those in favor of the order in which we're doing the Capital Project Sales Tax, we signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it, it is still ordered. We need a motion to move into executive session in accordance with thirty dash four, that's seven zero eight one, personnel matters concerning Williamsburg County Sheriff's Office or Department on this list.
Thank you.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor are going into executive session, signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it, it is still ordered.